Our first board has agreed to allow any comments from the public. If anyone have anything to like to address the board. Please stand, state your name, tell us what you'd like to talk about.
Steven Lomard, 137 or 67, Los Angeles. Just some concerns about that path over there. Are they going to put a fence on that side of the path to keep people from walking through our yards?
Steve, we'll listen to your comments. We're not going to have a question in much of this in here.
No.
We haven't discussed that till here.
Okay. So that's one of our questions. And we weren't, nobody even sent out any letters about that path. I was talking with Cliff Riegel, he said if you're within somebody feed the property line, people were supposed to get letters. Nobody received us, I'm here with my neighbors, we haven't received any letters. And it's only, it's nine feet up on property line. They're going to put a bench there where a light, which I don't understand the light because the park's closed from nine at night until seven in the morning. Has the light, I'm not sure why that would be put there. And the back, the fence would be nice for the safety of the neighbors. They live there alone, they don't have anybody protecting themselves, and they worry about people coming through.
All right, Doug Wood, I can tell you we will put that on the agenda for next week. All the board members will have an opportunity to, to look into what, some of the statements you made.
Sure.
And we'll try to address them individually as a group next week. So, you know, excuse me, in two weeks at the board meeting. That way we all can be on the same page and we'll be able to give you one answer from all of us.
Okay.
And that's what it will be.
Yeah.
We appreciate your comments today and again, you know, we don't do, not a public hearing, but we will put it on the agenda for the next board meeting.
Pick it up.
Okay. Ms. Mayor.
I'm Keith Duffy, I live on 32, Los Angeles. I just have one comment to make because in the fall, there's always a large soccer tournament here, which is wonderful. But the children, the parents are there with the children and they're watching the game, but there's other children around and they're, they tend to get a soccer ball and they end up in my backyard. Literally, I'm on the terrace some at times. And that's why I was, I'm more concerned about definition of a property line in some way, shape, or manner. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Does anyone else? Okay, we appreciate those comments. I can tell you they're in the minutes and we will make sure that they are addressed at our board meeting in two weeks.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, you all had it. Board, you all have a chance to look at the minutes from the previous meeting. I have ten motions to approve those minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes. Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion's carried. Next item we have, you all received the bills a couple of days ago. Where I'd like a motion to approve and, well, first of all, let me ask the treasurer, is there any additions to the legislation?
No, there is not.
There are no additions to the legislation. Okay. A motion to approve and pay these bills.
Make a motion to pay the bills. Second.
Discussion. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill may be paid. Next, we have correspondence, I believe, from our, who?
Yes, we do. Date of July 15th, 2016. Dear Mayor, Letourne, Village Trustees, The library trustees have appointed Susan Sullivan to be the permanent clear of the library at the current rate of $27 per week. Sincerely, James Jarrow. And he's the library board president.
Okay, so we'll need a motion to approve this appointment and pay in the schedule of $27 per week for a permanent cleaner. So do we have a motion to approve the appointment and the pay?
I make a motion to approve the work and the pay.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion's carried. All right, first thing we have on agenda for me is the municipal electric, uh, delegate delegate resolution. Uh, no one from the village will be attending this meeting, we attended one already. This meeting has a lot of, a lot of social activities and networking, but we felt it was probably best in terms of expenditure funds to simply vote by proxy. And this proxy that you all have says that the MEUA executive committee is designated as the accredited delegate to the village at Ross's Point to cast any votes for us during that meeting. There are no pretty agenda and good discussions with representatives of the MEUA, there are no controversial issues. So could I get a motion to delegate the MEUA executive committee as our accredited delegate?
I saw move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, is this Steve's 2016 annual conference, happens just once a year? The annual one?
Actually, this is the second conference. They call it the annual conference.
They call it the annual.
This is the, this is the biggest party.
Okay.
But the first one that we attended is, is the one with most of the media. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. When I approach a few, send that, send that in. You all received the Family Medical Leave Act policy for review. Basically, I'm certainly not going to read this entire packet to you, and I'm sure most of you are familiar with the federal family medical leave, the absence policy. And basically, it covers leave for the birth of a child, replacement of a child for adoption or foster care, care for a newly placed child, to care for a spouse, child, or parent with a serious health condition, or the serious health condition of the employee. It doesn't mean that they get paid annual leave if they have an extended leave. It means that the village must grant them leave in those situations. If they have time on their books to get paid for it, they will. Even if they don't, they still must be granted that leave in those situations so that they can take care of what they're doing without fear of reprisal or loss of their job. You've all read the whole policy, I know, from start to finish, so what I would need is a motion to accept this as the village policy on Family Medical Leave Act.
Make a motion to accept the policy. Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so, Clark, we have that settled for you. Next item we have are surplus items. You also have a copy of that. It shows two lots, briefly the things that we talked about several months ago. Many of them were stored at the water treatment plant. The first group will be sold, they won't be sold as a lot. And hopefully, on your sheet, in the top group, there's a, says print size incubator and dishwasher. Those should be scratched from your list because they were contaminated and they had to be disposed of in a special manner. Other than that, we would like to have a motion to advertise these as two separate lots. They're being separated at the water treatment plant into those two separate lots, and we've asked for a minimum bid of $200 for the each lot, merchandise so as is.
Are we going to advertise in paper?
That's what, this is the motion to advertise. We need a motion to advertise to sell these as two separate lots with a minimum bid of $200.
All right, and make a motion to allow the clerk to advertise in paper? What are we going to press or?
Yes.
Yes.
Second.
Further discussion?
Now, you just, are you just going to allow them to bid on just one lot, or you just can't take a, like say, the gas pump out of there and bid on that?
Yeah, they get it all.
They get it all?
$200 is a minimum bid.
Yeah.
And that, that top one goes as a lot.
As one?
And it's as is. We don't know if any of these things even work by the truth. The glassware in the bottom is glassware. I mean, it is what it is, so. People that are going to bid on it are going to know if they want it or not. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we can proceed with that. Finally, we have a kind of a unique situation here. On your agenda, it says acquisition of Lincoln Boulevard. If you all know where Lincoln Boulevard is, um, powered by Power Tax. A little history, I spent quite a bit of time with Mr. Pocky, getting the background of this. When Power Tax was built, Mr. Victor Pog was involved with acquisition of a grant for a footprint of land out there that he could build his, his business, and he did. And they did build it, and unfortunately, the road that leads, that leads into it, Lincoln Boulevard, is not, was not within that footprint. So as a result, the Champlain Industrial Development Agency, which was the organization handling the grant and development, actually took possession of that. It was, they were the landowner. At the end of the lifespan of Champlain Industrial Development Agency, when that dissolved, the land was turned over to the town of Champlain. So the town of Champlain is the landowner of Lincoln Boulevard as it extends out. It is all in the village, the corporate limits of the village at Ross's Point, but they're landowners, just like we're landowners, even though we're, same thing, nothing, doesn't have anything to do with municipality, politics, or anything else. It's just, they happen to have the deed on it. And our tax would like to see that land turned over to the village of Ross's Point. The village of Ross's Point has plotted the road in the winter to make sure emergency vehicles can gain access to the businesses that are back there, and we will continue to do so, although it's a matter of health and safety of the people there. It sounds like an easy thing, they're just ready to turn it over, it's fine, but as I said, our supervisor of public work, Mr. Pocky, tells me the road is, is made up of binder only, there's no top coat on it, and it's not in very good condition. Any new development will require repair and a top coat put on that. The lights on the boulevard are not energy efficient, and the men have seen they've been damaged by tractor trailers banging into them, and so they're pretty shaky. There is only one shut off valve on the southernmost fire hydrant, the northernmost fire hydrant, the valve is not working, neither is the hydrant. According to Brian. There's a pumping station on the northern end that's never been energized or utilized. There's also an electro junction box at that end that's never been energized or utilized. Brian tells me the northern end of the road is largely underwater for a good part of the year, and I'm sure it's now classified as a wetland, and a lot, a lot of that has to do with the beaver population, I don't believe they're not, they built, they dam it up, fill up the culverts, and every year, Power Tax has some local trappers go out and get rid of some of them. The northern end of the roadway has also been damaged by the logging operations going out there, the big skitters and all the chipping that's been going on. And if we, if, and this is what our discussion with Mr. Pocky has said, he said he would recommend only accepting up to the last building, because he said beyond that, you're entering into the wetlands and undeveloped, just more problems. But before we did, he would recommend that, of course, the road be repaired, and top coat be put on it, and the lights removed. So I know, I think this is the first time, this has come before you guys.
That we know it, Pog, before.
Yeah, but with all this information now, now, Pog's thought they had the deed to it.
Correct.
And then they found out through this, through this issue, what, where it actually sits. So I, I have not spoken to the town of Champlain, because first of all, I'd like to know what your thoughts are on acquiring this land, in what condition, if any, you think we should put on it prior to compiling a letter of acceptance.
There should be a turnaround, how far it's up the road?
Mr. Pocky noted that if we went as far as the last, the last building, we should put like a hammerhead turn, we should put a hammerhead turnaround there, sort of truck and pull away and pack.
Get out.
Get out. So thank you for this, so that's one thing. Are you saying, so one, one condition would be, do you think we should take it all the way to the end where we're in the wetland?
No.
Okay. So we would need to establish a hammerhead turnaround. We probably call it a tan turnaround, yeah, hammerhead, yeah. Establish your hammerhead turnaround. And only to the last building. What other stipulations do you believe?
Street lighting?
Pardon?
Street lighting?
Removal?
Removal and put off to the side.
Off to no one's entry?
Yeah.
Well, if we got done to remove it and it became our land, we'd probably be responsible for that. I don't know if we can, have them replace that. Can ask.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt that. Right away. Streets in the building have 50 feet or 30 feet or whatever from the center.
North of Power Tax is where the power line is in, and according to Brian, it's, and maybe Mr. Miller, who's here, that can tell us, do you know how far north of that roadway that power line is buried?
I don't.
Okay.
I know, I know it's buried to the last building, you have a transformer at the last building. I know there's a pedestal beyond the creek, but I don't know if there's pipes to that pedestal, but it's just a freestanding pedestal.
There's pipes in there.
There is pipes to that pedestal.
I've, I've seen wetlands starts in that area, and the end of that road is not in wetlands.
Well, it's underwater, so.
It's underwater when the, when the culvert is going.
Right.
It's a mechanical failure, that's not, you know.
Well, and so would you want them to, so would you suggest if they correct that, we would be willing to accept the entire road?
Well, my thoughts are, why would we want it? At all? What are we going, what are we going to gain by owning the road? I mean, we're plowing it already, we're, it's just going to be added.
We're going to have to, at some point, someone's going to have to repair it, because it's only a binder coat right now and it's deteriorating fast. It's what, 20, 20 and old, 20, 40 or? So, you know, it's, it's going to have to, it's going to have to be repaired at some point.
What's the wetland?
Oh, it's, it's.
I think so. I think so. It might in the park might to get the wet on this side, if I remember right. Was it 20, why not go on?
I bet it's 25 feet wide.
Always it got to be a little street.
Brian was prepared to do a list, but he had a serious family where it's seen, that's why we don't have that. I'd like to have, you know, some ideas. So we need to have a, a clear definition of the establisery way and where the power is. Okay?
And why would we want it? That's my other question.
And that's for you guys to discuss right now, if you can help.
No, as far as that tail end, that goes into undeveloped property, why would we even want to change the culvert or whatever it is to improve it so that we don't have water? Because it has nothing to do with those three buildings, so.
Exactly, lots down there are for sale, and all we're going to do is enhance the road.
Yeah, and we get no benefit out of it, other than, if it does, if it does get developed.
If it goes somewhere, we get to tax it.
That's right. That's what I'm saying, but right now.
Right now, it doesn't, it's not renewed very well, and we don't, we haven't had a clear survey of what shape it's in.
Well, again, even if we took ownership of it, doesn't mean we have to pave it and make it look any better. It's been like that for 30 years or whatever. And if you see something going in down there, perhaps we can consider paving it. At this point, leave it as is, we'd like to.
Okay, well, I mean, that's, so one suggestion is to accept it, but accept it as is or have them, have any improvements made. What, what would, what would you say?
Say take the lights out, not one thing.
Okay, so we have to, we have to. Remove, okay. Remove streetlights. If that removes streetlights, if we accept the whole thing, we don't have to have the turnaround. At the end, there's a big turnaround.
You have to make one.
I, I believe at the very end, you'd better basically at the very end.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it go all the way around, it's like a culvert side turnaround.
And hydrants?
Yeah, we have two hydrants there, but we don't have the current valve, a shut off valve on one of them, so. There's, it's probably one every five, a shut off valve every 500 feet. One at the road, that one has it, and no more after that. So we'd have to put those. I guess, you know, if, if you guys want to do a little more research into this.
Yeah.
And, you know, maybe everybody drive around, and we'll have the benefit of Mr. Pocky's expertise and what he's seen out there, probably at the next board meeting, and the questions that you've developed, we can do that. So I'd like to suggest that, that we, we continue this discussion with more background material that you individually gather, and then we have our resident expert here to do that, hopefully at the next board meeting.
Now, is Alan going to turn that over to us, or what?
Well, I mean, according to, according to the letter that we received from, from Power Tax, uh, we, the attorney, Mr. Fabro is the attorney for the town of Champlain, and he feels he could easily do a resolution, do the transfer. He just needs to confirm that we want it and will prepare and accept it as our transfer. And of course, he offered to be a resource for us to call him if we had any questions, but I think we need to get out there, take a look at ourselves, and speak to, you know, you can individually speak to Brian or have him address us at the next board meeting. But that's kind of where it stands right now. We haven't, we certainly haven't accepted anything, and I didn't feel it was appropriate without having, without having you fully up to speed on, on what this would involve, what the benefits are and what the, I mean, obviously, the benefits of having an improved road in one of the few areas left in the village for development is good. It's probably most likely going to be industrial development, if it's anything. So that's, you know, that's, that's a positive.
That's a plus for us.
Yeah, I think that's a plus for us. It's just we have to balance that against the cost of, what costs are we going to have to incur? What is the town willing to make any improvements to that land prior to turning over to this town? And they very well, very well may be, and I haven't had the opportunity to speak to them, I haven't taken an opportunity to speak to the town supervisor, because I felt, again, that I wanted to hear what you guys had to say about it, and so I, I don't think a couple more weeks is going to, is not going to change anything. I think we should just make sure we know where we stand, and if you want, I can talk to the town supervisor on the interim, say, you know what, this kid an idea, if he has any inkling about, they'd be willing to do any of the, any improvement. Would you want me to do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want to make, also make sure that where utilities, water and power and so on is going out there is going to come with this road, either by right of way or by ownership.
Well, it's in corporate limits of the village, so it can, yeah, it's go. I mean, we can play.
All roads in the corporate limits of our village, we don't own.
Well, no, we don't, we don't own your.
We never turned it over to the village.
We own your arena, but we.
My point is, where, like where we got the pipes for power, water, sewer, it's on village right of way. Is it in fact on a village right of way right now, what we have there?
That's, that was what Brian was going to explain to us tonight. We don't, it's north of the road itself, it's not buried under the road, it's north of the road, how far north, we don't know, and we would have to go back to the, look at the deed that was turned over at Champlain to see where it sits. And I don't, I believe that the pause would be more than willing to grant a right of way if, if in fact it was outside that deed area. Okay?
I think we talked about before, we do take the order of transport outside the, like you're saying, outside of your footage, kind of a pause going in that land where transformed.
Well, you would give us a right of way.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, that's all supposition on our part that he would, but it seems that way, it seemed very positive, I know. Administrator, Gene, you've had some conversations with representative of Power Tax about that, and you seem very positive about doing the transfer and willing to work with the village on any needs that we have.
Correct. That was my understanding.
All right. So I'll, I'll talk to the town, you know, and then let's, let's all, you know, take a, take a ride out there. Hopefully, you know, maybe Brian can give us a tour when, when his schedule permits for the next couple of weeks, and we can, we can move from there. Okay? So that's what, that's what we're going to do with that. Very good. All right, moving on then, I'll turn this over to trustee Moore for your, your item on compressors.
I just got one thing for information only, because it's already about to be, Brian Delmon, I want everybody to know, a water plant that they're getting an equal air compressor for $2,250, five horse, 80 gallon, which the older one's getting really bad, it's great crap, so they're going to get this one here and get one now, maybe one extra.
Initially, wanted to get two, and they cut it back to one, right?
As budget is. The surplus, the old? Uh, we don't know, I don't know, we didn't say.
I just want to let you know, it's only $900 in budget, we're going to have to take the balance out of, from balance. He originally thought they're. He originally put in for it, but he also put in, he originally, in last year, in the budget request last year, he asked to carry over $1,250 into this account, but it was only $700 in it to start off, so you can't carry over what you have. But he, and he never checked the budget, but he just wanted to make sure and let you guys know that he did ask for it at budget time, but just didn't get it.
Okay. Thanks, George.
I asked Brian Delmon about the, he got three prices.
Yes.
They're all for Chicago pneumatic, and I was wondering if we could get a price for another brand, or is Chicago pneumatic a great machine these days?
He got one from Ranger Supply, Northern Tools, and Jobber's Wardhouse.
They were, they were all same, basically same unit?
Yes.
What size unit do you know?
Five horse, 800, 80 gallon, 18 CFM. They got them with tractor supply as well, Hinger's all ring. This one comes with a, let's see, warranty, I think, cast iron construction, pressure filled holes.
Has the bid been awarded?
Warranty is 24 months.
It's just a purchase, you got, yeah, I mean, he did the, he got his two or three prices that he was supposed to do. I mean, it doesn't go out the bid unless it's at least $200,000.
There you go. Okay.
It'll be a day five, seven business days.
Two shots, I know it's close, if you want to talk about it in one word. No. Okay, trustee Moore.
I have nothing.
Trustee Hall?
Electric Department's been working on tapping the street, getting their underground in, and they're doing a pretty good job. We got Jason going up tomorrow and finish the rest of that cleanup and stuff, so.
Yeah, curving in too.
Yeah, and help with curving in and stuff, yeah. All right, that's it.
Okay. Trustee Garrett?
Just want to, this as a heads up, our two snow sidewalk plows, one's an 85 and 88, one's a 92. They're both really worn out, and John is having a hard time finding parts for them. The sewer plant also is in need of doing a skid steer. I've been talking with John, and Tim agrees with this, and I think Brian's on board, that when this does come due, that we get an articulating loader for both apartments we can use year round, instead of, you know, with a snow plow that sits six, seven months of the year and doesn't get used. No, we're talking an articulating one, the one with a small wheelbase, with a, there's one or two up there with a four foot six wheelbase on it, so we can use it on our sidewalks. They're still looking at whether or not they can put a snow blower on it, a V plow, straight plow. a V-plow, straight plow, would be no problem. But one of them has a hydraulic operated snow blower and, uh, it, according to the salesperson, doesn't seem to go any more than an hour and a half without having what, hydrolic cool down. So, I just wanted to, uh, just mention that. That'll be coming up by those guys and, so we can try to save some money instead of buying two new pieces of equipment between two departments if we can get one and they share it.
Any comments on that? Here's, uh... In, in the wintertime, if we have a hard winter, obviously, that plow's going to get used a lot and it's not going to be able to be used by the waste water treatment plant. You know, I mean, if we have, you know, if we got a plow twenty-five days out of thirty in a month, it doesn't leave much time for the waste. But I don't know how much they use.
Right, right. Tim said it's, it's pretty limited on, and, you know, I'm not trying to speak to those guys, just give a heads up. Uh, it's very limited use in the wintertime versus the other times of the year.
Well, maybe we're going to, it's an opportunity to explore. So, anyway, anything to save money, so thank you on that. Is that it, sir?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, or do we have any value reports? Let's start with the treasurer.
Uh, Friday, our new Conica and Molta top gear, uh, was installed and it seemed to be running perfect, so it's going to get a good workout this week with it.
Is that the one I saw you trying to make two hundred and forty-three copies today?
Yes.
When you wanted to? Simple, though, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I did get my two copies that long.
Alright.
Also, too, uh, we've got a lot of good feedback on the new utility bills. Uh, we are still in the process of working on WIP, which is the web inquiry payment portal. Uh, that allows customers to go back online and pay